All right.
Like Barrington, Barrington Hill.
How many?
You know, there's a bunch of Barrington, Port Barrington.
Wow.
Yeah, and they're all small. They're generally.
So they like share, like lease and buy around.
They have a contract with the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Which is their biggest budget item.
Okay. All right, let's get this show on the road.
I've got to see the letter.
What, what letter?
No, I think we're just still trying to keep this.
Is that the unsigned letter?
Eventually. If you want to, if you need the microphone, if you're.
I didn't get anything like that. Brian?
Okay.
You guys got something at home in the mail? Oh, can I see it? Because I didn't get anything like that. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, July 7th, 2021. Could we have a roll call, please?
Rob.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dorian Cobb.
Cap.
Here.
Amy Cap.
Here.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on June 16th. Does anybody have any changes, questions, or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Second.
Well, if you ever say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an informal review from Bridge Development.
Bridge Development is seeking informal review of a plan for approximately 516,000 square feet of industrial warehousing and nine acres of commercial retail on property located south of Washington Street, west of Route 21, and east of the I-94 tollway. The property consists of a total of 44 acres and is called out on the village's comprehensive land use plan as a community character area due to its size, location, and proximity to key transportation access and other community assets. The comprehensive plan concept for this parcel reflects commercial core slash mixed unit development consisting of commercial, hospitality, and residential. The applicant of the informal review is here to present the plans.
Okay, thank you. As you know, this is one of my favorite features of our planning process, the ability to have people come forward early in the process on an informal basis to present their ideas and get feedback from the Planning and Zoning Board. As I think everybody knows, it's not an official presentation. It's just a kind of toe-in-the-water thing to get reaction. And at this time, I'll turn it over to.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Callahan. I'm with the law firm of O'Donnell Callahan in Green Oaks. I'm here tonight. I wasn't at the earlier meetings, and I don't know, maybe I've been requested to be here because I'm old and I've got some perspective on development patterns over the last, actually, I've been doing this for over 40 years. So I've done work in the Chicago area over the last 10 years for Bridge, and during that time, I think I've been involved in more than two dozen buildings. So they've been very active in this market, and I've been representing them during that time. I wasn't present at the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, nor the Village Board meeting where this was discussed, but I had the opportunity to look at the videos. So to be, to be direct, the plan was not well-received, and I think the main reason was the comprehensive plan. And that's understandable because you have a new plan. I think it went into effect in October. So that is something we'd like to address tonight and talk about it. The developer, Bridge, has put together a new plan that they hope is responsive to some of your comments and addresses the concerns that you have. Maybe not all of them, but they're trying to move in the direction that the village, I think, is looking for here. Hopefully, it hits the mark. But, but before I talk any further, I think they've prepared a film or a graphic here that might explain what the updated plan looks like. So if you could run that, we can take a look at it. That's the proposed hotel, that first building. These are, of course, the industrial buildings. I think landscaping's been added. Some feature, architectural features have been added to the buildings. The buildings have been reduced in size. The southerly one, I think, has been set back further from Milwaukee. They put in a green wall, vegetative wall, along Milwaukee to provide a buffer. In the front, instead of four acres of retail and hospitality, there's 10 acres. And, you know, it's conceptual because, you know, there could be restaurants or other users. As you can see, here are, here's how it would be laid out. The, the hotel tour, more removed from Washington Street. That shows the landscaping in the front. So that, that it? Okay, so that gives you a feel for what they're trying to do. They're adding, as you can see, that southerly building, actually, the buildings are even with each other now in their setback from Milwaukee. One of them had been closer to the right-of-way than what you see here. And as you can see, there's a much larger retail area and hospitality area in the front. So those are the changes that have been made. As I said, Bridge asked me to talk because I've had a lot of experience. I've been doing land use law for 40-plus years in the Chicago area. The market has changed substantially. Before 2006, I was spending a lot of time doing very large, single-family residential developments, many of them in Lake County. Then the market crashed. That kind of development dried up. We're starting to see some residential come back. Some of the dormant developments are being restarted. Some of the failed developments are being purchased by other home builders. But I don't think we're ever going to see that kind of volume that we saw in pre-2006. Suburban office has really been in trouble for probably 20 years. I did work for a major suburban office developer, and the last time I saw my development contact there, he said they haven't done a new suburban office building in 20 years because the vacancy rates are so high. And I'm talking about standalone. There, you know, there'll be end user, you know, if Abbott Labs wants to build a building, they're going to do that for their own purposes. But speculative office buildings are just not being built anymore. So that market has, has changed substantially and over the last 20 years. Retail, before 2008, before the recession, I think I worked on the last regional shopping mall, which is the one in Bowling Brook, and that came online just as the market was crashing. There are, there has not been another regional shopping mall since then, and I don't think we're going to see any for a number of reasons. I also was doing a lot of big-box anchored shopping centers. It seemed like I was always having one of those in the works. And again, that, that all ended in 2008. So I don't think we're going to see that kind of activity again either. And I think there's a couple of reasons for both office and retail being in trouble. One we all know is e-commerce. Everybody talks about it. I still like to go to stores, but I have two adult children. They don't like to go to stores. They order everything on Amazon. Everything is delivered to their house. So you've got that issue, and that's a negative for retail, but a positive for the kind of development that Bridge is proposing. The other, I think, significant thing that's happening in the marketplace is COVID, and we come out of COVID. That's not, what we've lived through in COVID is not going to be good for the office development business. I think a lot of employers have figured out, you don't really need as much office space as they thought they did. People are going to be working from home, or if they go into the office, it'll be flex space. You don't go in every day. There's going to be a reduction in the amount of space that's being leased up. I wouldn't want to own any office buildings in downtown Chicago right now. Those are still largely empty. People are still not going down there. I don't think we're going to see much in the way of suburban office. So what do we have? For the last 10 years, most of my work has been on this kind of a development. And these are industrial buildings, as you know, and typically about 10% to 15% of those buildings are, contain office space. So there is office in them, but they're not standalone office buildings. They, they, the office spaces serves the users and tenants of the industrial space. So, you know, say there's 500,000 square feet of industrial buildings there. Of that, 50 to 75,000 square feet would be office space. So there is going to be office. So this really, if you will, is a mixed-use concept in the sense that there's industrial, there's office, there's hospitality, and there's retail. The market is changing, you know, whether we like it or not. I think that's what, what we're faced with. So turning to the comprehensive plan, I have a couple of thoughts. One is, I took the comprehensive plan and I read the text. And if you read the text, what you see here is not inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. There's a lot of discussion about mixed use of industrial and office near I-94 and access to I-94. Well, this property meets that standard. That is, until you look at the land use map, you know, the future land use map. And it's interesting because right across I-94, there's vacant property that contains much of this mixed industrial development that's proposed in the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I looked on the county website, the, the mapping department, and most of the, the property that's over there is unincorporated, and it's owned by one property owner. So that property may come into the village, or the owner may decide not to do anything, or may go to Lake County and try to develop it. So there's no guarantee that that property will ever come into the village. It may, and maybe you've had discussions about it. I have no idea. But we have a property owner here who wants to enact into the village and meet that market demand that you've identified. Maybe not on this property. It's not identified in, in your comprehensive plan for this property, but it is something that the village has recognized that they want to have in the, in this town. So I, I thought that was interesting. So I looked then at the, at the future land use map, and as mentioned in the introductory remarks, this property is designated as commercial core, mixed-use development focus area. And the plan for that commercial core lists five potential uses: residential, retail, office, entertainment, and hospitality. Now, the proposed development that Bridge is, is proposing here contains three of those land uses. It contains retail. It contains office in, in those industrial buildings, and it includes hospitality, the hotel that you see. So, you know, I, I would say that, maybe not completely, but it does address some of those uses that have been identified in the comprehensive plan. The one thing that I found that was very interesting is the, the comprehensive plan is unusual in the sense that it doesn't just propose future land use. It actually proposes a development design. It has buildings laid out. It has a circulation road. It's almost like the specific development for this property has been designed by the village. And I've really never seen that in a comprehensive plan before. And the reason is that a comprehensive plan is really just a guide, or supposed to be. I, I looked at CMAP's description of a comprehensive plan. And CMAP, you probably know, is the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. It used to be NIPSY, and it's the regional planning agency for the seven counties. They've added Kendall to the color counties. And, you know, so CMAP has said it's a guide. It's supposed to be flexible and adjustable depending on the circumstances. So, and then I looked, and, you know, the Supreme Court of Illinois said the same thing. A plan is a guide. It's not a regulation. But when you start designing a site with a building on it in a comprehensive plan, it, it kind of, I think, fuzzes over. What, what is the plan all about? Is it to nail down a specific development or say, this is kind of what our vision is? So it, it's unusual in that respect. I'll leave it at that. Now, I think the focal point of what the, the village is looking for, it focuses on entertainment and village center for this property. And I, in 2019, I was involved, I represented a client in a Chicago suburb where the village selected my client as the chosen developer to do a village center. There was entertainment, there was retail, restaurants, office, all kinds of things. But unlike this property, the development site is owned by the village. And they, you know, they owned the village, and they said, this is what we want. Come in and make a proposal. My client made a proposal. They selected my client. That site is next to a Metro station. It's right there. I mean, you can walk off the property and you're at the Metro station. It's on the main drag, a state highway that goes through the village. And it, it's the major development corridor in the village where there's restaurants, there's office, there's shopping centers, kind of like your Grand Avenue. And we negotiated and met with the village for about a year. And at the end of the year, my client had to just drop out. They went to the market. They couldn't find anybody. They couldn't, they couldn't lease up enough space or pre-lease it that they could finance the project. And so they, they wanted to do it, but they just told the village it was not feasible. They couldn't do it. And when I look at this, I think of the same thing. It's a difficult, it's, it's, I think it's, it's a goal, an understandable goal, and a valid goal for the village to have, but it's a really, really tough type of development to attract. And you don't have a Metro station next to this, and the village doesn't own the property. And so, you know, when I look at it, I think, well, I got a, there's a property owner who's being told, that's the development we want, not the types of uses, but an actual development plan that is in, in the comprehensive plan. Now, maybe, you know, you'll say, well, you don't have to do that. But it's, I think it's formed the expectation of the village, that that's what's going to happen here. And I don't, I don't know if any market studies were done by the village to say, this is something that will work here. I don't know. I don't, the, the property owner was not involved in that process. Perhaps could have appeared at these hearings for the comprehensive plan, but I don't know if there was consultation. I don't think he owned all the property at that point, but, so it's a difficult type of a, of a development to bring about. I don't know if it's financeable. I don't know if there's users out there that would be interested. So all I'm trying to say is, given the experience I've had, and again, I'm not an investor, I'm not a developer, I'm not an owner. I, I'm part of a development team for projects. Like, you know, I'm the legal side, you have planners and engineers. So I've worked on teams like that, and, but I've been able to sit back because I'm not, I don't have sleepless nights worrying about my money in the game, but I can, I can sit back and look at what's happening, and I just don't see this kind of development as being easy to achieve in a, in a place like this. So as I've said, you've got a willing property owner who wants to come into Gurnee, who wants to do a nice development, you know, and as I've said, I, you know, Bridge is a good company. I've done work with them for years. They're reputable. I think if you talk to any of the villages where they've done work, you would be satisfied with, with the answer that you get. So, you know, there may be a better location in the village for this type of use. I know people had suggested along Grand Avenue. I'm no expert in choosing locations for particular uses, but I am able to look at this, having gone through this in another municipality, and I, I just don't see that this is going to happen on this property. So I'm happy to answer any questions. We have other folks here from Bridge if you have any questions for them, and thank you for your time.
Do you want to start?
I don't necessarily have a question. I have a comment. I'm totally open-minded of what goes into that, into, into the land. There's no preconceived notions that I have. Different with your comment. My main concern is a warehouse space appropriate for that area. This is actually my third time I've heard this. I was sitting here on the dais on my, for the first PCB meeting, and then I went to the Village Board meeting, and I heard it here today. My main concern would be, all due respect to the Village of Hodgkins, but, you know, the video captured it right away, 10 seconds in, all the trucks in and out, in and out. So, you know, going to go up Milwaukee Avenue, go into 41, bypass the tollway, avoid the toll, increased trucks on the road. You know, if there was a 294, I feel like if there is a, not 294, 94 interchange with Washington, might make a difference. Tri-State Parkway and Cemetery Road, for the land that's over in that tri-state Parkway area, is buffered from many of the residents because they can just shoot out next to the Holiday Inn, get on 294, I'm sorry, say 294, 94. And, but here, we're going to have increased truck traffic. I was raised at the Village Board meeting with trustee O'Brien. Put a lot of talk about that. I, I, you know, I, I don't, I can't tell if there's that much difference i- in this plan versus the last plan. I do like the retail end of it and the, and the hotel, but, you know, my main concern would be having trucks coming in and out on our roadways. There's just no clear path. I think that it would not benefit the village, in my opinion, residents. It's my biggest concern. So that's my feedback.
Do you want me to address that now, or do you all prefer? It's, it's kind of, it's kind of informal. I'd kind of like to hear from my fellow commissioners before we start, you know, exchanging ideas.
I guess I have some of the same concerns, and this really didn't change anything for me as far as doing the mixed-use parcel, 10 acres. For one, we've done this before where there's been left a parcel to put in retail, and unless there's somebody already set up to go in there, in a lot of cases, it just doesn't happen. For instance, the property developed on the corner of Gauges Lake and Hunt Club, there was supposed to be a retail strip mall went in there. It's been how many years now? Still not there? There's a development, yeah, that was the Bickford, right? Southeast corner of Washington and Cemetery, that was supposed to be a three-unit development, and it looks to me like the third unit is not going to be developed, or at least the property's being sold. So it looks nice on paper, but I, I don't see it happening. But beyond that, even beyond that, the whole thing with the truck traffic is one of my main concerns too, and was my main concern before. This, although there are some options, you have a full access drive coming out onto 21, going north or south, either way they want to go. So that corner, that whole intersection there of Washington and, and Milwaukee is, during rush hour, is very crowded. Adding anything to that, in my opinion, with trucks is, is going to be a nightmare. I, I can't say for sure, but one of the things I noticed is Stern School Road being closed down. Just the small amount of traffic it put onto Grand Avenue, it's a mess. You know, it made a nightmare, and if anything happens, it backs up drastically. So that's, that's really where I stand. And one thing I saw also, there is no turn lanes added in this for either turning into this complex or out of it on Milwaukee Avenue, or I guess Washington also, which, in my opinion, I mean, this is a busy road, and that's just going to back up traffic even worse than it already is. So that's where I stand. Well, one more thing. And although you're saying that we do have industrial in Gurnee, we do, but it's in a certain area, or certain areas, and that whole idea of extending it south of Cemetery would allow that traffic to go right up Cemetery Road and, and, or not Cemetery Road.
Tri-State Parkway.
Tri-State Parkway comes all the way down. So that Tri-State Parkway would be connected there with truck traffic going back up to Grand Avenue and going right on either north or south. So it doesn't add a lot to the side roads. So, I mean, it's a nice-looking development. I would prefer to see it on the other side of the tollway.
Josh?
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate you coming out and sharing this with us. I'm sure the village staff has shared some of the concerns about, that they've shared with us, you know, about the parcel, the comprehensive plan, jobs, storm water, water detention, access points and aesthetics. I'm sure you've heard that before, but, but I want to bring up one of the concerns, I think, that I personally have. I'm not going to repeat all. I share a lot of the same concerns, but I don't want to repeat them. I, I just want to talk about the comprehensive plan. I think the spirit of the comprehensive plan, and you even mentioned it, was entertainment and a central focal point for the village. And I, I still think the focal point of this plan is, are these very large warehouses. And I think that doesn't match the spirit of the comprehensive plan still. I mean, I know some adjustments were made with the hotel and the retail. It's, it's a nice effort, but I don't think that the warehouses are, are what was envisioned with the spirit, right? Not, not the actual detailed plan, but the spirit of the comprehensive plan. So I still think it doesn't match.
Right?
I will concur with.
I'll concur with everything that I've heard, you know, to this moment. I just think this is completely out of character with what we've envisioned for this area. And, you know, I'm just going to take a kind of 60,000-foot look at this. I mean, the comprehensive plan is supposed to be our long-range view of what we want the community to look like, not short-term. So, you know, easy developments, as was referenced here earlier, that's not always the best for what you want from a long-range planning perspective. You know, and we spent a great deal of time on putting this comprehensive plan together. And again, I mean, I, I brought this up at the last time these guys were here. I just find it insulting that they come in here and say, oh, well, that's your comprehensive plan, but you know what? It's just unrealistic, and you didn't really know what you were thinking about when you put this in this, this area. I mean, I can't support this. I, I mean, I, I can't support this.
I, I concur with a great deal of what was said, and, um, and I, going back to, um, one of the comments that, that Jerry made in his presentation, that, um, that this latest proposal or idea, if you will, does have some elements of what's in our comprehensive plan, but it's 20% in terms of acreage. Um, that's really not in the spirit of trying to, you know, comply with or align with the vision that's in the comprehensive plan. And I concur with all the comments about truck traffic, and when I take a, a look at what's, one of the materials that was, it's the same map that's up there, I'm not seeing, like, parking for the employees, um-
There's parking with-
It's, it just, it just seems like a tight fit. It's like putting six pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, in my opinion. I mean, the, the buildings are way too big. Um, I was at the village board meeting as well, and, um, there's actually no receptivity at that level in terms of putting mega buildings on, on this property. Um, I, I personally don't find big warehouse buildings particularly attractive, and I certainly don't want to see them at a, at a highly visible, um, point, um, in terms of an impression that someone would get driving down the tollway and seeing Gurnee for the first time. I mean, I was just up in the Racine area last weekend, and, you know, those, those buildings there, that are along the tollway up there, I mean, they're, they're just, it's out of character with what I think belongs here in the village, so.
I would make a couple of comments, I think probably, uh, anyways, but I might as well do it. Uh, would you mind going to page three of the, of the PDF package, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Would you mind just going to the third page of this PDF package? I think this addresses a lot of the traffic conversation. Uh, it, look, I get it, there's going to be truck, truck traffic coming out of the site. I think, you know, uh, you made a comment about there's no interchange on Washington. There really, it kind of is, because on Milwaukee and 94, just at the south of the site, there's an on and on, on and off ramp from I-94, so trucks can already come on. It's actually easier to get onto 94 from Milwaukee, south of our site, than it is at Grand Avenue, because there's less traffic. So, a lot of the trucks that are coming out of Tri-State are actually coming south on Milwaukee already anyways. So, we're not asking to add any highway traffic, it's already there. No one's going to go east on 41 and go that way. There's one toll to get to the state of Wisconsin. Truck drivers don't like mixing with cars. It's a pain for them. They're not going to do that, and, and frankly, I think we would agree to trucking restrictions, heading east on the site, if that was really, you know, the concern and we had to get there. Because I think at the end of the day, if you look at our truck routes, which are in yellow, they're really avoiding downtown Gurnee. They, they're, they're not going to head east. Truckers don't want to mix with cars. They're more scared of cars.
Excuse me, have you, have you lived here? How long have you lived here in the village?
We ran a traffic study.
Ran a traffic study?
Yep.
You do realize that trucks get off of 94 and go down to Riverside Drive, and then up to 41 to avoid the $2 toll, right? You know that's-
Typically, the tenants that are taking space in these Class A buildings do not do that because they're paying a premium rent, their truck drivers are heavily insured, they don't want to mix with cars.
Sure, so, but if they're going to be taking, if they're going to be going out of Mil- uh, I think it's Milwaukee at that point, and they're going to go, you're saying they're going to go find a way to get on the tollway to go pay the $2 toll, instead of going just right up Milwaukee slash Riverside up to 41, through all of the residential, and they're going to somehow just magically get on the, I'm not talking, I agree with you going south, right? I'm talking about going north.
They're going to take a right and a right, they're going to take, get out of Milwaukee Avenue, they're going to take a right turn onto Milwaukee, they're going to take another right turn directly onto 94 North, and they're going to cruise. They're going to have no stoplights.
They're going to, they're going to go through the toll?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We've, we've found, and Bridge has run studies, and I'd be happy to present it at the meeting, we've found that tolls are a non-factor when truckers look at decisions and when tenants make decisions. Uh, the cost of the real estate and the cost of what they need to do significantly outweighs the, the tolls. It's what we've kind of found nationally, locally, regionally, tolls do not have an impact on truck routes.
I'd love to, I'd love to see the report.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to present that, obviously, when we come into the plan commission. Um, and I think in, in general, you know, I, I, we get the traffic complaint, and I, I think it is what it is, there's going to be trucks. Um, you know, we've pushed the retail to the point of, you know, and I think Mr. Sula, you know, 20% on the site, that's a lot of retail. I mean, and, and, and we're pushing hard, and I think if, if, if there was direction here, and I think, again, I've asked three times, they haven't gotten a ton, you know, the industrial is going to anchor the retail, and the retail is going to be here, and we can do anything on the site because of industrial. And if, if you're, if you're not going to get that, you're going to get nothing. So, I think like 20%, 30%, 40%, what is that right mix? It's probably five. We're trying to push to 20 and more to make something work here and be flexible. So, I guess the, the question that I ask everybody is, is there a scenario where some industrial works here? And is, i- i- and if, if the answer is just no, it'd be helpful to hear what the comp plan is, three buildings, four buildings, one building, 200,000 square feet, no higher than a certain clear height. We've not got a lot of direction in terms of if any industrial is possible here, and I would tell you, if the answer is there's no industrial possible here, then it's probably a farm for the next 50 years, which it sounds like Gurnee's fine with, so, great. But, um, you know, I, we would love some concrete feedback on if any industrial is possible, we'd love to hear it, frankly. Because I think if the answer is none, then no development's going to happen. I've talked to every retail developer, I've talked to every office developer, you're at the employee entrance to Six Flags, the retail is, is tough, we can make it work with the industrial anchoring it, and it's a loss leader in a lot of ways, but we want to make it work. But if the answer is just no industrial ever, and the traffic's too much of a concern, and even if with truck restrictions, and even with screening, and you're not going to see it, and turn lanes and all this stuff, and if the answer's still no, great, but I think we're willing to do a lot. I mean, we spent a lot of time and thought in that video, and, uh, if the answer is just no industrial at all, zero, we don't want any industrial here, we think this is a town center, even though you can't walk, bike, or take the train here, then so be it, but, you know, we're here to compromise, and, and we've gone a long way without any direction. Um, so-
Well, it's a, it's, it is a, just to give another feedback, I mean, based on what you're saying, that if there's, if you're stretching it at 20% retail, right, and then it probably should be at 5%, are we then putting our hands up if we say yes to a ghost town? To a, a 75% empty retail center? Because you guys are pushing the envelope to make it 20%?
No, it just means we're losing money, and more money on the retail, because we have to sell it for less, but we could make it work.
Uh, I'm Dan Rydel, I'm the property owner. Um, you know, it's a difficult spot, because I don't know what you gentlemen want to hear from me at this point. I mean, we've got 44 acres over there. We've got a quality developer here, there's three or four other developers, all similar, that want to do the similar thing as they're proposing. So, there must be a market demand. Our comp plan calls for a modification or an alteration, you know, based on market demand, you know, demand, and we certainly have one here. So, what, what do we do with this property? We've got 10 acres of buildings, 10 acres of retail, 10 acres of common area, and 10 acres of, of stormwater. So, it's basically even balanced. When you look at it from a helicopter, you see two monster buildings. 52 monster buildings are enclosing all the traffic. I mean, all the truck traffic is in, inside of these things. You can't see from the end, because they put a wall on one end, the other end is blocked, and a lot of those buildings are, these are state-of-the-art, first-class buildings that bring a lot to the table here. Uh, I don't understand the traffic. I mean, we can bring a consultant, because none of us are experts on that, I guess. I'm not worried about $2 tolls, everybody goes through, tries to save $2. I mean, it's not an element that's an issue. Uh, it, the tollway is right next to this property. I mean, you've had the Laduski property to the west, and, you know, there's 300 acres there, and it's, it says in the comp plan that you'd like to have industrial at that site. Well, we don't know when it's going to happen, if it ever happens. And those trucks are going to go right down Washington Street, but these roads are made and built for industrial property, and, and there, there, there are not, there are not any village streets here. These are state and, and federal highways, so I don't know how we're going to hinder anything with this thing. And what, what do we do with this property? If we do nothing, and we get a Costco, or an ABT, or a Woodman's Grocery Store, I mean, those are 200,000-foot buildings. Would we deny that type of use also? I mean, in the comp plan, it mentions 100 times industrial, but I mean, we kind of avoid around the, what the, what the vocabulary and, and, you know, the content is in this comp plan, but I, I don't understand what's, what's such an adverse issue that here is going to hurt the village by bringing these gentlemen in here. Energy is going to bring energy, and construction brings construction, and, and this is as much of an impact as the Great Wolf Lodge had at the Keyline Cove. I mean, this is not a small project they're proposing. So, if we do nothing, how long does it take us to develop this? We'll be back here, and maybe, I always hear everybody wants a, uh, market, uh, what is, what's this, the grocery stores, Crow, you know, no, the, the small ones. What's the one? What? No, no, we're talking about Costco, but the small ones, like a Treasure Island or a, a Fresh Market. If we come in one, they only take an acre of land. We put them behind the gas station, or do we put them down by the tollway on the other end? Or we put them towards the, how do we develop this property over the next lifetime if we're still here before we get done with developing it? The, the main event these, these gentlemen bring is a master plan to this whole thing. We know exactly what we're having. If we modify and make it work somehow, we know what we're, what was going to be coming forth. But if, if we just get one spot at a time, and we get a Starbucks in one corner, and we get a Fresh Market in the other corner, and where do we put the roads? Where do we do anything? And, and this is going to evolve over your lifetime? I won't be here to see it end, because we can't just patch it together. I've built in Gurnee, I know the property, I've been here 60-some years, so I know where the traffic goes on 21. You know, you're only a mile and three-quarters to get on the tollway going south from this property. Uh, incoming from northbound gets off right on 21 there, by, and it comes north, there's, there's no traffic going through the village of Gurnee. These guys want to cheat and go through there? We all cheat and go around the traffic, like, or the toll booth. I mean, that, we can't control things like that, but, you know, that's disargumentative. But I, I just don't understand why we, we look at this as such a negative thing. Nobody is taking enough time to look at the positive in this thing? I mean, what, what if it was a, a bigger building, and, and we had two, uh, major office buildings in there? What harm does this do? We have all this property in the front with hotels and restaurants, or whatever that we could put in there, and it camouflages these, these buildings as much as we can. I mean, on the ends, you can't see, you don't see the truck, trucks shipping and, and changing products on the inside and distribution. I mean, it's, it's what is here today, and I don't know what will be here tomorrow. I mean, the comp plan calls for skydiving, indoor trampolines, uh, arcades. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me. Do we want to wait for an arcade? And how far, how much capacity are they going to take up out of 44 acres? A half an acre? And then, okay, where do we build them? I mean, it, this brings more to the table than, than we all realize. It's a full master plan for that entire triangle. I just appreciate you taking a deeper look at this thing, and realize the good in it rather than all the bad. Thank you.
Any follow-up comments, Josh? Ryan?
I guess I'd, I'd make the comment that, yeah, there's a market for it. I see that. But there's a market for a lot of things that, that villages don't allow. They don't allow it because it harms the community. And I'm not saying that this will totally destroy the village of Gurnee, but I, you guys are trying to hide these buildings, there must be a reason. So, I'm assuming that you even realize that this isn't a beautiful project for the village of Gurnee. Um, you're trying to hide these buildings, the big industrial buildings, that will make some money for you guys, and that's a great thing, but, and it brings some income here, but you can't bring income to the village at any cost. And although you say there's not going to be a lot of truck traffic going north on 21, you were saying that there's truck traffic already there, but you know what? I've been going by this piece of property quite often lately, just checking this out, because I want to give you the benefit of the doubt that this would work in this position, but I don't see the truck traffic. And I don't, I know people that live down there in that area, and I don't think they would really like to see any more truck traffic, even if there is some. I, these are huge buildings, I have no idea what's going to go in there, but I can imagine that it would generate quite a bit of traffic in and out of there. And you mentioned a Costco. How many trucks come in and out of a Costco? It's a big building, there's cars that come in and out of them, but there's not a lot of trucks, and they'd only come in at certain hours of the day. Um, I mean, we have a Sam's Club in Gurnee, you don't see trucks going in and out of there all day long. So, I don't agree with some of your statements. I do understand the project, and I understand why you would like this there, but you should understand why some of us don't agree with it.
Well, can I, can I ask what someone, can you offer to me, what is a better plan or a better opportunity to send these gentlemen away and forget the industrial billing? So, where do we go to work? I mean, what do we try to bring in first? I mean, where, where do we go from here?
Well, I, I'll give a comment. How many, how many, in this current configuration, can you show us, how many dock doors are there, bays, between the two buildings?
There's probably 75 dock doors.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to be curt, okay? Seriously, I think where you would start, I, I'm not speaking for the entire board, but something that is not 75 dock doors or bays.
This is 90.
90 dock doors or bays. I just think that that's the feedback that I have, I'm hearing from other people. I can't tell you what to put on your land. Um, like I said before, I, there's some elements that I like, the 20%, but I'm concerned that that might not be sustainable, based on what the other gentleman said, but I just think that 75, 90, 100, whatever, dock doors, bay doors, is not something that the village of Gurnee, its residents, benefit. For me to take this and go, "Yeah," because you're asking us for an exception to change the zoning, and I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, "I, I don't see where I would be like, 'Yeah, that makes sense.'" I'm not convinced at that. Um, so I would start there, but I can't tell, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you what to do on your land, because as a general concept, I believe the landowner should be able to do what they want.
Frankly, you are telling me what to do. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, and I apologize, but you, you kind of are telling me what to do on my land. I mean, it, you're putting, you're putting a billing on my land, and you're telling me what we got to do. You can compete directly with Gurnee Mills if you build a commercial billing there, and, and more retail, and build a coonial development from Liberty. You're competing directly with Gurnee Mills. Is that what we want to do on this site? I mean, you are telling me what to do. You tell, I can't cut down 95 docks, not 75. I mean, this is what we're proposing. We've come up with every possible compromise we can. These gentlemen have spent a fortune trying to present this thing properly. I'm probably maybe the worst enemy now, but they've been here for six months, and so have the other two or three gentlemen that would like to buy this property to create the same environment. So, where do we go, Mr. Sula?
I, I mean, I just, I live in the area, and you're asking me to say, "Feel bad because I don't want all these other trucks that are going to be coming through, that I have to, you know, deal with as a resident, my neighbors do?" I'm sorry.
I appreciate your input.
Yep. It's, it's just-
So, our, our intention is to, to work with you at whatever level we can. We cannot cut this project down any further. It is what it is. We'd like to come back here in 30 days for a, another, uh, public hearing, and it is what it is, and we have to move forward. We cannot just, uh, opinionate on this thing all the time. I appreciate the informal position here and, and, uh, trying to give us your answers, but I mean, I just don't think that we can work with, uh, dropping this down to 70 units or 70 docks or 20 docks or whatever, and try to mix it up anymore. I mean, it's a, y- y- you don't have the retail demand. You, you, we put the retail in this site because we tried to accommodate you.
And we all know that, that the proposed character of the big buildings is not going to support retail. Warehouse workers and factory workers, they don't leave the building at lunchtime. So, all these employees that are going to be there, they're not going to do anything at all to support retail. And the concept of having a hotel out there is nice, but I, I question whether or not you're going to be able to attract a hotel next to two mega buildings. a hotel next to two mega buildings. It's not the type of, they're not the type of buildings that are going to attract people looking to stay in a hotel because they're on business, because we're not talking corporate offices or anything like this. Here, we're talking about warehousing and maybe light industrial. But, you know, it's nice to hear and be enticed by, oh, we've added some retail, we've added some other mixed use. But the reality is it might not have the ability to thrive, and none of us want that. And that leaves us with empty retail, empty mixed use, and two huge buildings that aren't envisioned by any of us when we developed the comprehensive plan. And I said this last time we got together, we just came off a hundred-year event. And I'm not going to get on a bandwagon really easy to say the comprehensive plan that we adopted is out the window now because we don't know what's next in terms of people coming back. I, for one, think that once people are used to being out and about again, that the people that, you know, went to the e-commerce stuff, I, for one, thank God, Amazon's got a great return policy, but it's frustrating to go out and buy things that you can't touch and feel and experience firsthand.
And as a property owner, then I'd probably be, in my best interest, to modify or alter the comp plan. But I don't know what to alter to or modify to, because it mentions a hundred times industrial sector in there. It says, based on market demand. We have market demand here. We have lots of product inside that comp plan that totally aligns with exactly the objectives and the policies of the comp plan.
But the comprehensive plan also envisions those uses in specific places. And a great deal of thought went into the balance of where, of what we think we need as a village to be sustainable and where we want it to be. And two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot buildings in that location isn't anything we envisioned.
But a Costco or Woodman's would be okay.
I'm not saying that.
Or we have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-foot buildings in the Grand Tri-State Park now. And they're contiguous to this property.
Yeah, just from a legal perspective, there's really two requests here. One, you want the board to, or the village to consider rezoning. The current proposal is not consistent. None of this is currently zoned industrial, so that's one of the requests. And that is pretty much a legal process, but half of the property is in the county. That's a legislative process. There's no way you can compel the village to annex that unincorporated area. And so that's why the village, you know, I think, is looking at this to say, you know, obviously, villages always have to consider land uses, but, you know, you have to understand that process, too, is that the village did just go through that comprehensive plan and conducted public hearings on that. And the current use is going to require a zoning change and a major annexation to accomplish this. And so, you know, it's certainly, I understand from a business standpoint, it seems like, you know, the business people think this is a viable use. You just have to match that up with the fact that what is the current zoning, and what part of this property is actually in the village right now. And that makes it more difficult, too.
We're well aware.
Fortunately.
But if we need to alter this property, then that's what we have to do. There seems to be a market and a demand here. And if the village denies annexing it based on they're not interested, I guess that's all we can do. But that certainly is not in the best interest of the schools that this development is, the revenue it's bringing for the schools and the business community around here. The land is made to be annexed, and it's certainly intended to be annexed.
And like you say, I'm not commenting on that, because that's a legislative process, and, you know, that's the board to decide. I just wanted to point out that in terms of procedurally, you know, and I understand the property owner wanting to know and exploring those possibilities, but it has to be within that framework, is the only point I wanted to make on that.
Well, lastly, then, is there anything that we can do to modify this plan that is anywhere remotely acceptable or supportive of your favorable recommendation to the village board? I mean, other than take a building away? I mean, what are you going to put on the tollway?
I have a question for you. I was given the impression that we were going to see a traffic study. How come that never got presented? Because that's one of the main concerns everybody's had.
At this juncture, and I apologize for my...
We provided it to you.
You did?
It's in your packet. It should have been.
Wow. If I did, I missed it. Sorry. I did not see it.
It's not a full-blown traffic study. It's just a memo summarizing, yep.
Okay. Who did the traffic study?
Hailaway.
Hailaway.
Personally, I think we've taken this as far as we can tonight. You came for, informed the feedback. We've given it to you. I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to sketch out and develop anything, so I mean, this is just so far removed from the comprehensive plan, I just can't get my arms around it, so I suggest we adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Sula, I mean, there's no reasonable modification of what we're proposing here that in any way would be acceptable to you and the board?
I mean, the village board gave you some ideas, and you've come back and said that that's not acceptable. So I'm not sure what else to say, Dan. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 21st. Is there anything on the calendar?
No public hearing items at this point, but we might have something else.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Say it.
If you ever say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.